Ready.
All right. Oh, dear. Okay, I got it. I don't want to leave because you're recording. We're good. Well, so we do have the transportation budget coming out today. Haven't seen it yet. As soon as we do, you know, people start breaking it down and looking at it. What we can tell you is don't expect great things. Specifically, what we're looking at at a meeting with Axel at the association yesterday and most of the single or individual county lobbyists looking at this and the picture isn't being painted too brightly here. We're looking at very little money for municipalities and counties. Probably not, at least in the transportation budget, probably not really any money for culverts. Unless, for example, the culvert in question is right next to a culvert that the state has to replace. It looks like they're going to put money in the budget for the state culverts, but only ones that are court ordered. There's some problems that we're seeing in terms of how conversation has been so far. One of the things that we're expecting is not much money for any sort of preservation and maintenance. The other concern we've got is as it passes, how we hear it's going to is that this could be kind of the new norm, if you want to call it that. This is kind of something stick with us for a while. They keep wanting to put more local options for taxes to be able to raise money to run transportation. But the problem they've got is, you know, we're kind of capped out and for the culverts, for example. You know, we're on the hundred year plan to be able to replace all the culverts and that's just, you know, not within their timeline. So they're going to have to figure something out. The conversation about some budget provisos, both in the, you know, they're talking about the capital budget, there may be some funding there. But there's really nothing to speak of. I mean, it's not going to be a whole lot. To put the transportation budget into perspective for you, there's about eighty-four million in bonding and the, just the Democratic caucus alone has asked for one hundred and twenty-four million. And different requests. That doesn't include any of the other caucuses. So what that means is there's going to have to be a heck of a lot of money cut out. You know, I mean, some people are just not going to get their money. You know, basically, they're funding the transportation budget with a transfer from the general fund because their sales tax was a lot better than what they thought. We are looking for, again, this is coming from the governor's office, definitely going to be on the lookout for some budget provisos. Specifically, talking to riparian areas. May be included in that again, if, you know, if in the rural areas, you know, there's a project that lines up with a state property. But it, what it looks like right now is, and this is kind of the whispers going around the hill, is the Democrats don't think they're going to fare very well in the elections this fall. And so they're trying to lock down as much funding as they can right now, just in case for the state side of things and the different, different programs they've got. You know, so take it for what it is. That's kind of what we're looking at. Other than that, you know, we've made it through the first two cutoffs, policy and the fiscal, fiscal cutoff was yesterday. Cut off, which is the House of Origin cutoff, is going to be on the fifteenth. Floor action between now and then, we have seen some bills pass back and forth. What we're looking at and rumor on the hill is that we will not be seeing any compromises. Any negotiations not going to be asked for, proposed, or required, they don't think. The Ds are going to try and go it alone. And, you know, see if they can get a budget passed. So that, they're going to have to get their own party on page, which could be kind of, kind of interesting here as we come down to the last little bit. So, you know, that really stems from the fact that the governor vetoed the compromises in last year's budgets, you know, the go-home bills and so it's really not even worth asking this year. There are some bills that people have been asking about. You know, one of them is seventeen ninety-nine. It's a landfill food waste. I don't think you guys are big enough that it's going to affect you. But some of the stuff we watch is we definitely, you know, want to watch for the policy coming down the pipe and make sure they don't apply it on a narrower scale next year. So we got some things like that. Is there anything that you guys have been watching specifically? That you'd like to know about? One thing that we have talked about before is the nineteen twenty-one, which is your renewable tax. That one, we're not hearing a lot of good things. It seems like there's a lot of work that still needs to be done on the bill to make everybody happy. We will see what, see if they pull it from rules.
Right, yeah, no, I've been, I've been watching the nineteen twenty-one and it seemed like it was kind of a partisan vote, but that partisan vote is enough to push it over the end. I think they fixed a lot of the major issues with it anyway.
Yeah.
So, yeah, no, I'm watching a bunch, but right now there's not a whole lot of new stuff. Mr. Sodder, do you have anything?
Just your take on thirteen thirty-three. That's the extension of the point oh nine. And I know it, you know, it passed the House, it's gone to the Senate, which I believe it did last year and just hung out there. That's obviously something I'd like to see that extended out as far as I don't know. Is, is it? I mean, the hearing on the, I think that was the first, they had a hearing in Senate.
Oh, yeah.
I forget who it was, but anyway, I'm just kind of curious if you're hearing, you know, if that's going to actually get. It seems to be popular, like, it's, it's no big deal. It's just that it's, they can't seem, you know, things don't happen necessarily because it's good legislation or it's, it's because somebody wants to, you know, they, there's something to be gained for them politically out of, you know, trading it or doing whatever. So I don't, I just don't hear anything.
Kind of what, what we're hearing right now is it may kind of do what it did last year, which would just be kind of out in the Senate. That, though, it may be on somebody's list here. You know, it's kind of the, one of the compromises inside the party.
Right.
You know, so we'll, we'll have to see, but that one will come down to the very end and it'll probably be a surprise. Here you go.
Right, okay.
So, you know, the other thing that people are really watching, obviously, are the, any of the bills that the governor's power here, especially in a state of emergency. Seventeen seventy-two and fifty-nine oh nine. It looks like they're probably thinking about fifty-nine oh nine, which really isn't much of a, not of a bill. But it would be a check where the party and minority in the House and Senate could have arrived at governor's lockdown or a state of emergency or whatever after a certain amount of time. It's okay, but it's not what anybody was hoping for. So I'll tell you, the governor is pretty unhappy about the fact that they would even question, you know, his authority to clear a state of emergency. So obviously, there's enough validity or possibility in these things to make him mad.
Yeah, and some, some people running for elections in some swing counties that are swing districts that might change things too, so.
You don't say. So, yeah, you know, and I think, again, coming back to the fact that this is an election year and a big one, especially for the Ds. I mean, it's theirs to lose, right? So if they can keep their, you know, keep enough seats, they'll do all right. If, you know, goes the way of Virginia or New Jersey, you know, they know they're in trouble. So it could be, could be an interesting midterm election here. So I think what'll probably happen is with this budget today, it'll come out, we'll get some analysis done on it. I'm thinking that WASAC is probably going to take the position of, you know, concerns. Kind of the ones that I, that I mentioned, you know, there's really not much for maintenance and upkeep and county roads and it would set that precedent. Definitely some counties that are going to support the budget specifically because of the projects in the counties. Bridges are a big one. You know, I know you guys have the bridge just down the way from you too, so. We can kind of follow up on that. And I think that the association is expecting counties to kind of go their own way on it. They just asked, if I can kind of give them a heads up on what we're going to do. So it comes out, let's have a look and then we can kind of touch bases and see what you guys might want to do.
Okay, I got Mr. McClure, Economic Development Director, has some questions.
Yes, hi Zach. The data center tax incentive bills, there are four of them that were floating around. One Senate Bill fifty-two sixty-two got through the Senate last session, not through the House. This year, it seems like the one that's getting most action was, is eighteen forty-six, House Bill eighteen forty-six. Do you know how those are doing?
Yeah, so there's definitely some progress being made on them. I'm pulling up right now to make sure that I don't tell you something that's not correct. So eighteen forty-six, they're probably going to let die is my guess on that one. And then the fifty-two sixty-two, it's probably going to come down to the very end. It's going to be too, too excited to move anything. Right now, those where they probably, if they don't move it by the fifteenth, they're probably not going to on this one. So let's, it's hard to say. They just have to decide to pull it from rules.
Okay, so again, fifty-two sixty-two, if something moves, that looks most likely.
That will be the most likely, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Yeah, that was important. Yeah, very important.
Got it.
Anything else?
All right, thank you.
Well, that's all we have for you today, sir.
Outstanding. Well, as always, call or email at time and then we'll be in touch here about the budget, see what, what we need to do.
Perfect, perfect. Keep sending those emails. I enjoy them.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I mean, it's one of those, there's a giant stack of bills that you have preference on or not preference on. And it's, it seems like all the ones I'm interested on are dying over there.
Are dying.
So painful death.
Yeah.
And all the ones that it's like, no, please don't pass that.
They're still alive.
Flying right along.
That's the way it usually is.
Yep. So let's just kind of wait and see. So the only thing good going for us is it is an election year, so some of those extra controversial ones are actually dying a slow death, which is fine.
Good.
The mics were using popping up on that speaker there.
Okay, cool.
Good to know. Well, I guess we'll just hang out and wait for Public Works to show up.
Yeah.
Speaking of, I did want to let you know, I'm having Jim Smith from the PUD reach out to me and we're, we're meeting today at lunch to begin the conversation on the Dallasport waste park. Keep you guys in the loop. He requested the meeting, so I think they've heard. Yeah. Which is good. Communication is always good.
I look forward to you returning
With.
With a mutual understanding that it isn't free.
Yeah. I don't know if that's going to be a mutual understanding. I will deliver the message.
Did you see the changes they made to the pill bill? Or might have sent you something he may not know. It ended up getting out of committee. There was one Republican that voted yes, the other four voted no.
Oh, those, okay, sorry. I was having, I had a, I was thinking of, I was, I was actually working on federal stuff and when you were saying built, I refer, it's like, I was thinking, oh, that, yes, I did. I saw the, I read the, the substitute bill. And it's, yeah, and they, they fixed a lot of the things, I think. It's, it's a way better bill, the way it is now.
Getting closer.
There's some questions?
Well, I still don't, I mean, we still don't know what minimum and maximum because they kind of punted to the Department of Revenue.
Or this chart, assessment chart.
Right.
Kind of thing. So it's kind of going to be curious what pops out of the Department of Revenue.
Right.
Which might be harder to change later if it's their own thing, but gives me hope. And the way I read it is not going on the tax forms.
Yeah.
Which eliminates all shift period.
Right. What also? I like their, right, but the, I, I want to see their, you know, because it's not required to use the cat, or you know, the cost basis, this alternate way that what, what is, let's see what they come up with.
Yeah, but I think it's still going to come down to, it's not required to use the cost basis, but the Department of Revenue recommends it. So they will continue to recommend.
Right, because it's the easiest.
And the cheapest. Right. I mean, because, you know, small, little hub on counties like us can't necessarily do it another way without having to hire somebody every year to do it. So, yeah, I don't, I don't see that changing, but at least it's not locked in stone for a potential change later.
Hope they fix most of it.
It's, it's encouraging. Because honestly, I don't know that we'll ever get rid of the cost base. Corious decommissioning bill is still moving, so. I gotta get glasses or sunglasses.
Getting your sunglasses?
No, getting some glasses. Yeah, I'm getting my sunglasses.
It is supposed to be sunny later.
Now that the lights are staying on, it's just super red. For the amount of money spent, the fact that there's glitches in the system is very frustrating.
That was me. They do work.
Mr. Pace, nobody's told us yet how it sounds.
Probably can't hear us.
Yeah. I think they can, because it's definitely. They're hot. No more muttering under my breath.
Yeah, the new ones will have a mute button. For now, when there's no mute button.
We're just on.
If any of you just joined on Zoom, we are waiting for Public Works to show up at ten o'clock.
Jed just says it sounds a million times better. Probably not bad.
Save yourself.
There's a helicopter overhead.
F and FYI, we've got the White Salmon Valley Pool District coming in. I think it's done until the twenty-second of March, but they're going to probably zoom in. Can I give an update on the pool as well as, there's a presentation from their fundraising consultant.
Interesting.
Yes.
I look forward to hearing their presentation.
When did you say that is?
I believe it's the twenty-second of March. Some of the emails, you can see that things may be starting to get back to normal. I think we've got two icicle up and it's scheduled for the county.
Really?
Yeah, they'll go, one of them starts in Goldendale, kind of loops up and then goes, Senatorville Highway down.
So there's, now that I think about it, there's, there's one that usually trucks by me in the middle of nowhere down a gravel road. And I always think that ought to be horrible out of ten speed, but.
Traveling, they always had one if you knew your instructor's back up to.
Oregon announced the end of the mask mandates, probably by March thirty-first. So now we're just waiting on our governor to release his hold on our lives. Figure eventually he's going to have to make a comment.
The White Salmon Valley Pool District.
Actually, that brings up a question. You might know the answer to.
My power cord keeps getting.
The fifty grand that the previous board gave to the White Salmon Pool District, did that come out of oh nine dollars or was that out of?
I think it was out of, yeah.
That I meant to look at that this morning.
I was thinking it was out of the community development from the case of PETA. But I don't know. It's, so it's, yeah, it could have been just.
I don't reserve the case of PETA brought into it at all. I got to thinking about that the other day after we kind of talked about it.
No, it wasn't. It was not oh nine dollars, I know.
Right.
Oh, okay. The bill for the annual subscription for ascend. It was like a hundred and forty-two thousand. What is that? Omentum Technologies.
I was kind of surprised at all the auditor membership fees.
Oh.
It's like they get charged way more than we do.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
And they're quite effective, we've been told, so.
Trying to figure out why one mic down there is longer than the other mic, but they're loners, apparently. The ones we own are supposed to get installed tomorrow.
Yeah. Everybody got a mic. I've been reading through, I'm actually reading what Jim Smith today. No, I read through it. I was just doing my homework before my meeting again today. Or refreshing my homework. I actually read through it when you gave it to me a couple of weeks ago.
I just highlighted what I thought.
I'm not saying, you know, you might want, want to read the whole thing.
You know, yeah. Sorry, sorry, people. Still getting used to.
You guys can go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay.
So we have one item on the consent agenda and that's to advertise our striping program. So for this year, it won't take place until probably the first part of summer at the soonest and should be done by September at the latest.
How do we pick what gets striped, where gets striped? I mean, I'm assuming you have your own like little six-year transportation plan, you keep up to what's gonna need it coming. Or is it, how's that work?
Yeah, so there's some policies that were set a long time ago about where to stripe edge lines, you know, how, where do we have them? In general, what roads get striped, and then there's a manual, a national manual that we use, it's based on traffic, that tells what you should stripe.
So you are striping new things, you're not just repainting old.
No, we repaint old things, and then we re-stripe, but we chip seal.
Right.
So that's new striping.
But for the most part, you're not creating new striping on roads that didn't have it before.
No, just maintaining.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, before I forget, I don't have it on my list, but if you're heading to Bingen on Highway 14, the state is gonna start up their rock fall mitigation, and it's just west of the rest area in Lyle. So they're gonna work on that, they're gonna have basically 45 minutes of every hour will be closed Monday through Thursday, and then on Fridays they'll do traffic, single lane traffic control, which could delay you for 20 minutes on Fridays. But the last 15 minutes of every hour will be, that's when the let traffic go, Monday through Thursday. There is a parallel road that we have, it's Old Highway 8, that a lot of the locals will use.
Yes, yes, we do.
It could be a problem for truck traffic, so we'll have to keep an eye on that and work with the state, because people, when the lines start backing up, it's really easy on the west end to take that detour. And everybody has a GPS now, so. Yeah, the cars aren't so bad, but the, if the truck traffic starts diverting, it will be a problem. All the log trucks that come down from Canyon Road though will.
They will use that.
They know it. So, and that's okay, but this is also the time of year when we have a lot of pedestrians in Catherine Creek, and that it could be an issue, so we'll monitor it. The work is supposed to last as a 20-day window, 20 working days. The state said their contractor said 13, but we'll see how it goes, they have 20 days. So, just to give you all a heads up. Everything on construction still shut down till probably sometime in March. Still have snow on Canyon Road, which is the last road to get new signs and guideposts. So we'll have to wait till that dissipates, and we're hoping by March, especially if we get more weather like we've seen the last few days, which the long-range forecast shows that it's nothing significant through the rest of this month, but that can change. I think there's a little bit in, in March, but March snow doesn't last long typically. Let's see, Courtney Road, still waiting for WashDOT, so we, they have everything they've asked for. It's supposedly now at headquarters, and typically that's a four-week wait, and that'll give us the permission we need to award that project that we opened bids on in the past few weeks.
We're not at the, so for now, just let it ride.
No, no, we're, we've heard, they're getting added. Yeah, I wouldn't, we're not, we won't dust that off.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we're moving the slope.
I know, yeah.
While I still can.
All right, Clickitat path, we're still working on that. WashDOT, it sounds like maybe they'll pave their piece, which is from the entrance to the school, south to basically the edge of town. They're gonna have a chip seal project that chip seals a lot of 142 in the River Valley there, and they'll just not do in the town of Clickitat, because they have a paver planned for that in a couple of years, so they'll finish that. And 23 is when they think they'll pave their portion of the path, the park's path, basically is, which gets them out of having to repair their sidewalks and sidewalk ramps through town. So they're providing alternate access, which is, it, it's, it's challenging through town, but it's, there has to be some connections made, because most people still walk the street and need to get across the street, so there has to be places to do that. And. Let's see, so we're still working on our piece of the path and still plan to build it this summer, that's our plan. Courthouse parking lots. We are working to, this month, probably get our old building cleaned up so we can move Juvenile in there, and then their building will be vacant and ready to remove. We are staging all of our items for the surplus sale that Greg has planned in Annex One, so that everything's going there, every, if it will all fit. If not, some of it may end up in half of Annex Four, we'll see, there's just a lot of stuff. So that, I think he's planning on the end of March as the online auction again for those items. And then we're working through our on-call consultants, we'll have a few of those agreements ready for signature in the next week or two. On the maintenance side, our crews are running the mowers, it's good weather to do that. Grading, grading all the gravel roads and the potholes that have showed up over winter. And on East Road, the east side guys are replacing some of the reflective guideposts. White Salmon Cruise and Glenwood, still removing all the brush and trees from the storm earlier in January. And we've collected a lot of that debris in the Lyle sand pit, and so that's where we'll be burning it this week. To get rid of it.
Burning well.
Yeah.
Started yesterday, and it looks like they're about done, I think they'll be done.
Yeah, by the end of the week, they should be finished. Okay, facilities, so we got, finally got permission or approval from DOE for our plan to fill our hole, and so we're gonna basically tank the water from the hole up to the fairgrounds, land-apply it, which is a method that they allow, after we test it for any, any residual petroleum products, which we've done it already, and there aren't any. So we'll apply that up there, then we can backfill the hole and move on with the rest of the parking lot. The second phase of this is that groundwater issue that they had concerns over. We will draw down the water in our irrigation well that's outside the front of the jail, and then test that, and that's our, our well, that's, it's in lieu of having to drill another well, they're gonna allow us to do that, which is great. And then we'll probably test it again in the future, but this, this is our monitoring plan. We don't have to sign up for the voluntary cleanup plan with DOE. It's a much better scenario for us. There's still flooring issues that are on the punch list. Furniture, we'll be waiting till May to get the rest of it. I think they've about completed all of door issues that we've had. But we'll check back, the blinds, blackout blinds started being installed, I don't know if they made it to the second floor. If you tried to pull yours down, you might know.
I didn't try.
Yeah.
I'm enjoying the sun.
Mine looks the same.
Yeah, I, I know that not everyone's happy with the blackouts, because it's either you have light or you don't. And on the, on the first floor, I've heard that people kind of like those other ones, so I'm gonna ask the contractor about the cost for the ones that they already installed. I, I don't know what they would do with those.
Right, it seems like.
Shades, so they may be available for a reasonable fee. And I'll, I'll get that, and we can talk about that at, at a future meeting. But the blackouts are what we paid for, and will be installed. Okay, HVAC units, the contractor corrected all the defects now, and some of the units actually quieted down, so the one out here is much better, much different. So now all the rest of the issues are engineering issues, and so they're gonna come back and reduce some of the CFM in some of the units, and see if that quiets them down in our noisier areas, so that's the next step in this process.
Hopefully they don't slow that down too much. I guess when the lights stop swinging out there, we know they've slowed the flow.
Yeah, I think, I think your, your guys' offices, Dan's office is the best, Jake's a little bit better, and yours is probably has the most noise. So they did improve somewhat in there. I think the unit above Lee is still noisy.
Well, our temperature gauge is at the bottom and always has been, so I don't know that it kicks on very much. So I'm curious in the summer when that temperature gauge shifts. If it works a little more, it might be a little more noisier too.
Yeah, it, it's blowing though, when I went in there, it was blowing.
Yeah, it blows fine in my office. I've never known it to not be raining. Except when we shut it off.
Right.
See, I think you've got the most airflow, and that's why you'd have the most noise. And I got the least amount of airflow and the least amount of noise.
Yeah, but it's blowing papers off my desk, I knew.
Plants are moving on.
Yeah, please, it is.
And mine, if you want airflow, you have to open the window.
Okay, let's see, so the painting, the HR and weed remodel work. We talked about the parking expansion with DOE. Courthouse entry, our carpenters pulled off to remove the walls from the year-old offices and chambers so they can remove all of the asbestos that were under some of the walls. And some of the walls will remain, and some of the tile will just be there. But that's how we're, those walls don't need to be moved, and so it's, it's just better that we don't do it, more economical. So that'll, the courthouse entry will get finished after he's done doing that work. Let's see, radio sites?
Radio sites ought to have something next week to, we'll talk about to finalize the lease agreement. That covers that.
Okay, so last thing on our list, printed list, is the Murdoch speed limit revision proposed by WashDOT. So the top sheet with the nice aerial is WashDOT's study, basically the summary. So they put the results of the summary, and, and I think we've talked about this before, that in, when you're traveling 60, there's kind of an incremental reduction of speed, and to draw it down, in this case, to a 40 from 60 to 40, it's staged similar to what's done in Lyle and, and Bingen. And, and then they'll revisit it, but they have to start, start, it's kind of a slow process, because there are limits to what you can do based on how we do speed studies. So we could, we could reduce the speed to whatever we wanted, but you'd end up with some people obeying that, and others that drive what's comfortable. It's essentially what happens, and so with that big speed differential, it becomes unsafe.
How much say do we get in the speed, what's posted on the state highway?
You can comment, but ultimately it's their, it's their decision.
And they're doing their own speed study and coming up with their data.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, they, they have a very similar process. The one thing that's kind of different in this one is that the public actually had, the people driving this process actually had their own public meeting to talk about the speeds and what they thought, and that's the second sheet that shows what they, they would have liked to have seen as an initial change.
When they, I guess I'd say when they start yelling at us for not making it low enough, I want to make sure that it's not of our control.
It's out of our control, we can comment on it, but they set the speeds on their routes, just like we do. So anyway, there was no, no official public meeting with WashDOT, they tried to set one up as a Zoom meeting, but the community said we'd, we'd just rather move on and go with what the reduction that WashDOT has proposed. So, just so that something can get accomplished out here.
At least for some, it's movement anyway.
Yeah, it is.
It's not to what the community wants, but at least it's heading in the direction they wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, and, and like other communities, the, you do this, and then it kind of, the speeds kind of normalize to this new adjustment, and then you can look, go back and look at, can we reduce it again? But you have to start getting compliance.
Right.
With the drivers at something that's reasonable. And that's what they're trying to accomplish, and I, and I know the state has already said, well, we'll go back and revisit it again. So, and I, I sent this electronically to you, both of the, all of this, so you should have it if somebody asks you and is interested and doesn't have access to the information. You got anything else?
Yes, we have to get cursed. So our development inspector, we have three inspectors, two are capital, and one primarily works in development. And our development inspector has gone to work for the state. And we would like, he works with the developers, very important position. When we don't have him here, we don't, we can't provide the service that we normally do. So developer calls, wants to have his road approach looked at, or his private road, he's the guy that goes out and says it's good, or it's not good, or you need to do this, or you need to do that. Well, now we don't have the, the guy that did that, his lap went to the state, so we'd like to refill that position.
Same pay level, I'm assuming?
Same pay level.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Too good.
Thank you.
That's it.
Hit it.
Okay.
Questions?
No, well, I have a, can I visit with Kim today about the documents? I don't know if she's in today.
She is.
She is, yeah.
I'm just happy she's in at all. When she retired, I was, I thought she retired, but.
No, we worked her back.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
2460 is her phone number.
Okay.
77.
Yeah, and she's, I talked to her yesterday, sent her all the stuff.
I just, I just wanted to check in to see if she had any questions that I understood from my narrative, so.
Yeah, yeah, she's done a lot of work on that, that area, so she's familiar.
Yeah.
If anybody can figure it out, it's Kim.
Nope, that's all I have.
I don't have anything for you, so keep doing what you're doing.
All right, thank you.
Feel like we needed a bigger table. A three-desk table.
We'll just rotate out.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna be choreographed. In the spirit of Olympics, it would double, double swap.
As long as you stick the landing when you leave.
That's right, that's right. Okay, maybe, well, good morning, and maybe I'll start with natural resources. Been increasing Whitney's involvement in our Swizzler water storage project, the EIS. We've got some new work products here at the end of last year, end of January. Up some updated reports, studies that were responding to scoping comments we received during SEPA. And then she's helping me, thank goodness, enter data into the reporting system for Eagle, called Eagle that Ecology has. It's a nightmare of a software program that.
Is that a new system?
It's a couple of years old, but I've.
But new to you.
Kirsten had done it before, and helped me with that, it's just, it's so detailed and persnickety, and whenever they make changes, it's a nightmare to, to deal with, so I'm. She's working with it on another grant that she has, so she, her, she's familiar, and I don't have to go through hours and hours of training, which is really helpful. You know, I, here a few weeks ago, I brought up that the Central Neese, Clickitat Conservation Districts were looking for some funding support for their software program to help with the stream flow monitoring. Asked them to come back and talk to the board, I think I've, that sort of got put aside. I got an email from Lauren, they're interested in discussing that again, so maybe I'll bring them. So maybe I'll bring them in some afternoon when, when we have the full board, because I know Jake's familiar with their projects and or Commissioner Anderson and may have some specific questions there as well, so. And from here, I'll just turn it over to Whitney, see what she's got on her list.
Sounds good. Well, good morning. Other updates are our Dry and Butler Creek project, where we're monitoring, monitoring stream flow. We're in the process of finalizing a grant extension with Ecology for that grant, pushing it out until June twenty twenty-four. We've had issues with getting consistent data collection from Dry and Butler Creeks, just issues with the equipment, it getting knocked out from flooding, et cetera. So we're extending the period of performance for the grant, so we can have two continuous years of water data, which will then inform whether or not we want to pursue a feasibility study for putting a reservoir there.
Can you remind me where Butler Creek is?
Yeah, it's to the east, northeast of Goldendale a little bit.
Something to sit goes along ninety-seven.
Yeah. So Ecology has been supportive of that extension because they know the challenges that we've faced, so. That's good news, and we've been able to reallocate some of the budget to support the extended period of monitoring that we have to do and the administrative costs that have come with having to extend the grant for additional time period. On the lead entity front, we're preparing to enter into our annual grant round where folks can submit project ideas for salmon recovery projects. Last meeting, we had updated you that we might be expecting more money than we typically get for our annual grant round. That has now been pulled back again, some of the, there's a variety of reasons, but we're still expecting our base amount that we get each year, which is about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars for salmon recovery projects across our area. We may get slightly more, but we aren't going to have that higher amount that everyone had been hoping for.
Question?
Yep.
Has Public Works checked with you about the culvert on Finnridge Road on whether that would qualify for this or?
On Finnridge Road? Not specifically. Yep, I'll write that down and check with them. Um, I had talked with Jeff and they were going to work on a list of priority culvert projects that we have and then try to match them up to see if they would be a good fit for this or other.
The Finnridge Road is scheduled to be done this year.
Okay.
So if we can get grant funding for that versus taxpayer funding for that, that would make me happy.
So this process, by the time it goes through prioritization here locally, project proposals, and then goes on to the Salmon Recovery Funding Board, we'd expect a funding decision for next year's dollars around.
Uh, late September.
So this would, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be, they wouldn't be able to get funding until December, likely. That's when the contract would be finished.
Okay.
But I'll check in with them on it and see if, see what we can do. And then more broadly, I am coordinating with them to see if we have other culverts and where it might be a good fit for this or other fish funding programs. Okay, uh, next up on our list is a Clickatat mill. We have a meeting planned with the Clickatat Community Council for March second at six P M. This is to gather input on what the community would like to see happen with the county-owned portion of the Clickatat mill site. The need for this meeting is because simultaneously, the Fisheries Group has, is working on a restoration project there. They're currently in the design phase for what the stream restoration could look like for Snyder Creek that runs through the mill site. So we want to make sure that our process of revitalizing our portion of the Clickatat mill is aligned with their vision for its stream restoration. So we're one of multiple involved landowners, so we want to just make sure we're marching our process forward.
Are they, do we feel like we are participating or being, I mean contacted and, I mean, we are one of the landowners that the, that the stream is running through, so I would hope that we, like all the landowners, that the project potentially is, is running through, are being, you know, are, are being talked to and so they understand that this planning effort is not going on absent landowner input, considering it's on people's lands.
Yes, yeah, we've been involved in all of their planning conversations thus far. They know that we're still in the process of figuring out what we're going to do with the site, so they're, they're just waiting for our, our input as we know more and have direction for what we want to do on the county portion.
Where are you guys holding this meeting up, by the way?
It's going to be in Clickatat at the community center.
Okay, so I believe we are currently thinking that Mr. Sauter, Mr. Anderson. So it's going to be a public meeting, so if you would like to attend to, the notice is already going out.
I will be there.
Okay. And the second and third of March, there's a conference, we have to send somebody to it, so that's going to be me. Richard is going to attend the meeting as well. Do you have anything to add to the discussion on that Clickatat mill meeting?
With which, I think it is pretty exciting that we'll be able to.
Yeah.
You know, for, you know, we, we were able to get the community center there, you know, re-. Be able to do this at.
Uh, other things that are going on, um, in two weeks, we have the reboot of the SimCo Coordinated Resource Management Plan. This is to the east of ninety-seven. Um, it's between Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Conservation District, trying to come up with a coordinated management plan there. I believe it started in two thousand sixteen, but the process kind of stalled out, and now they have a neutral facilitator coming in to help get everyone through the process. So first meeting is, is next Thursday on the seventeenth.
Is that something we have any say in, or is that just Conservation District?
We've participated in the past, uh, so we'll all be attending the meeting.
The big thing was that the county supported W D F W's acquisition of some, some lands there and one of the key points for the board was that there be a management agreement with Conservation District and that, you know, those historical uses, livestock grazing, timber production would be incorporated in that.
But I just, I think there's more interest, public access, hunting, mountain biking. It's not just all cattle grazing and timber, but I want to make sure we get a voice in there.
Okay.
Okay. And then the last thing on my list is, um, you might have heard already, but there was a gray, a gray wolf sighting in the county, uh, of a collared gray wolf. So I touched base with W D F W, they're aware of it, and they, their conflict biologist has been out meeting with livestock operators just to keep everybody in the loop.
Location? Location?
We think it's in Glenwood. The, the, yeah, there is a online portal, portal where people can report sightings, so you can look at past sightings throughout the county, which is kind of interesting, but.
In that general area, so.
Yeah, they don't really.
And it was collared.
Not downtown.
It was collared, so they knew where it was and how long it's been there, they just haven't told us, yeah, so.
Right, yeah, yeah, they don't share their telemetry data.
No, they don't. I found that out on the other state, so.
Okay, that's it for natural resources? Yeah, let's see how, other questions?
Nope, I'm good.
All right. Okay, I just, uh, you know, the, uh, our tourism promotion, uh, projects, that's funded with tourism dollars. We've got, uh, those contractors are drafted, uh, and ready to go. The recipients all agreed with them, and the prosecutor's office was very quick in turning around his review of those. So far, I've got another one that I just sent to them yesterday, but I really appreciate how fast they have been on these. And, uh, the Chamber Economic Development Support Contracts, it'll be coming to you soon, so we've been working on that, and maybe I'll just.
Was there a, um, unused balance from revenues this year, or does it pretty much?
I'll have to double check on where we are.
I believe there is some.
Yeah.
A smidgen carryover in the next year?
No, because we did that last year because of all the COVID issues. This year, we didn't. We started a, we, last year, for like the economic development support contracts, we did a contract amendment to add dollars, so those funds carried over. Some of those funds were monies that the board had added in specifically for the Chambers helping us with getting information out relative to COVIDs and business owners and that sort of thing. So that, we just ended that contract. The tourism promotion contracts were not extended through last year. Those are single-year funding. So there, there has been money left on the table as a consequence of COVID, yeah. Richard, you want to jump into your list?
Uh, yeah, so over the last month, um, what's really taken up a majority of our time is the federal E D A grant with the airport here. We were able to meet the deadlines for the vast majority of things that the E D A had wanted. And in addition to that, um, some things that had come down was we did have one beneficiary drop off of our original list. And then, uh, we had Laura Ivis, she's the Washington State Representative for the federal E D A. She, she drove all the way down from Spokane, and she did a tour of, of our new county building here, as well as the airport. And, and we had just told her exactly what we're trying to do, so she really got to see it, you know, eye, eyes on. Commissioner Anderson had attended that meeting. I thought it was very. I thought it was very fruitful having her there, uh, and it seemed very promising. She seemed like she was, seeing it in person, she seemed like it, uh, it made everything more real, if that makes sense, as opposed to looking at maps and reading documents and stuff.
Um, the project is state E D A and not federal E D A. I thought it was all federal.
Yeah, so it, it is all federal. She's the Washington State Representative for the federal government out there in DC, so she, she's the rep. Some things that we're going to be doing moving forward is in regards for a pen and ink change with the FAA. Uh, I'm in the midst of trying to connect with the airport manager, as well as the airport engineer, to make sure that before we approach the FAA, that all of, all of our i's are dotted, t's are crossed, uh, before we start requesting for any sort of alterations to the airport plan. And then, and that's really one of our last items that we need to do currently. We, we, per the, per the federal E D A's, um, direction, we have gone out for, uh, NEPA, uh, review, so with, with the local newspaper, just putting the public notice out there that the county and the airport is working alongside, seeking those funds from the federal E D A. Moving forward, um, the Port of Clickatat is looking into doing another building. Uh, the building that we had assisted with looks like it's, it's a success with the Port of Clickatat from this last year, and they're going to be looking into potentially doing another building, a larger building uh, in the same location in that same lot.
They rented the last one yet?
I'm uncertain of that. I, I do know that they have a tenant that, that they're speaking with right now, so, um.
I'd say I know, anecdotally, I don't know officially, but I, I believe they have.
Yeah, yeah, it's. Also, we're still doing the McAd seds. Um, we have a deadline on that, February fifteenth, uh, with all of our local different jurisdictions, taxing jurisdictions on, on, uh, putting in their final infrastructure project list that will be out for review for us, and then putting and then updating our annual amendment to our countywide infrastructure project list for the Economic Development Strategic Plan. And then lastly, childcare. I had been working with D C Y F as well as the Department of Commerce, um, and our local S P D C representative, and we are making progress in delivering some trainings, um, for a local childcare facility or in-home childcare licensed, uh, operations. So, uh, we are making progress on that, and that's about it for the month.
Question, sir?
I can, I'll do it offline. I was curious if you found anything out or ideas as far as it.
Yes, so as, as far as the taskers that you've given me, uh, in regards to different parks and recreation, it should be noted that there is, uh, this year more so than the last few years, there's been more interest in, in parks and trails and biking trails and, and whatnot, just in general. I did find a few, and then I, I lost them, so I'm, I'm in the midst of trying to find them again. But yes, there, there's been some, some interest, whether it's, um, uh, city council meetings out in Bingen and White Salmon to, uh, folks out in Dallasport, folks here in Goldendale. There's some renewed interest in seeing what kind of parks, what, what kind of dollars are out there in, in, in terms of like hiking trails, walking trails, to make our, you know, I guess livability more enticing, so.
Are we proposing the thought of coming up with some kind of a county management sets list type of thing for parks?
No, I had been, I was, had been approached by the community council in Dallasport and then some community members, and I think they came in too about, and I had, I had suggested that we look for, because sometimes there are planning grants to plan for, uh, as a first step, and so that was what I'd asked Richard about, is it, you know, because you, you see those sometimes.
Yeah.
Where communities do plan, because there was a similar prospect, you know, when they did, the, the work got done in Clickatat where they, they kind of came up with a plan as far as for the community center and then all of the, the park, um, that, they were able to get grant dollars to construct all that, but you have to have a plan first before you can, you can't go ask for money for something that you don't even know what you want to do.
Right, and I would, I would, my question is kind of lead agency, I'm assuming Clickatat, that was Parks and Rec district, and what's the Dallas?
No, Dallasport would be, because it's on, it would be county.
Or have a Parks and Run page, or anything down there.
No.
Just in general, though, I think that there's been some requests to see what kind of funding is out there, whether it's city jurisdictions. I know the city of White Salmon, the city council, they've talked about, uh, their, the walkability of their town. They brought somebody in to do, uh, to walk around and, and, and see how easy it is. In the past, Bingen, the city of Bingen has looked at the, the trail from Bingen to White Salmon and seen how they can interconnect that. And that's, that's got some renewed, renewed interest this year as well. And in the past, I think when we first did our Economic Development Strategic Plan, they talked about little bike pump tracks here, as well as biking trails around Goldendale for tourism. And so that's also, I've had different people bring that up this year to me. Over the last few years, it, it kind of died down, but I think this year there's some renewed interest as we, specifically, I think more as we get out of this pandemic and, and people are kind of seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. I think there's some renewed interest in, in that realm, just in general, so.
I would agree.
Yeah, so I'm doing some research, seeing, seeing what kind of funding sources are out there.
Well, be sure, if it's county property, be sure that Public Works, because they'll be responsible for all problems we create.
Yes.
Yes.
And that's all of it, so thank you.
I have nothing further.
Thank you.
And once I do find those, I'll send them over to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, whatever you find, send it to me, too.
No, don't send it to Dan.
I have my own plans. I have my own list, but, uh, I don't know if I want to share my list.
We, we have different ones, I think. Let me look at my list before we just. Now, when he, when he comes back with his list, I will cross-match it to my list and share it with you, but there's, there's far more far deeper dives. Far deeper dives than just state funding sources, private funding sources are a big thing for parks. Anyway. I don't think we have anything else. So I guess we will adjourn for lunch and be back at one o'clock.
I guess we have been doing, I guess, a motion to recess. If you wish one.
Yes, please.
Chair pro tem. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to recess for the lunch break. We'll be back at one o'clock.
I would step down and second the motion. All those in favor, say yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Or yes.
Yay. All right, we adjourn for lunch. Okay, it is one o'clock. We will start our regular meeting of the Platte County Board of Commissioners. Let the record show, the Commissioners Sodder and Commissioner Christopher are present. Commissioner Anderson is away. We will start with the opening pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a right to justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to, to, make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I will step down and second the motion. All those in favor, say yea.
Yea.
Aye. Motion passed. I don't think we have any meeting minutes to do. Okay, so we'll move on to citizen comment. Citizen comment will be three minutes. Please give your name and general location, if you will. And also know that we will not be responding to questions during citizen comment. We will be reserving time at the end to answer questions the board wishes to answer. So there's nobody in the room, so we'll start online. If you have a comment, please raise your hand, unmute yourself. Star six, if you're on your phone. Zero zero eight eight, go ahead.
Yeah, this Delmer Eldred, Goldendale, Washington. And I would just want, like to know who authorizes county funds for additional legal counsel? My second question is renewable energy is a private business. And so all the considerations and lenient fees that the county has progressed in charging renewable energy, will they do the same for any startup business in Clickitat County? I would just wonder if the commissioners have any idea about how business actually works? Or are they, are they just working with the people that can benefit them the most? That's, that's my comment.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else have a comment? Not seeing any, if you have a comment, please raise your hand, unmute yourself. Say something so we know that you're there. Must be a nice day outside, there's only twenty two people out there in town.
It is a beautiful day out there.
All right, we will just continue to do some business here. Citizen comment will run through one twenty five, so if you have anything to say before one twenty five, raise your hand or unmute yourself and make yourself known and we will check back once in a while to make sure there's nobody there.
You have those other files or some that are pretty much just.
Yeah, but I threw them over there in case you wanted to look at them. Because I always want to look at them.
Okay.
I'll look at them.
Guess I have to sign on the right line to do them. Still citizen comment, if anybody out there wants to make a citizen comment, please raise your hand, unmute yourself. Wants to comment about how great the mics are right now? Speaking of which, do we have the temporary mic down there somewhere?
Should be in our drawer over there.
Yeah. Unbelievable guy says it works fine, there's no issues. You guys accidentally pushed the button, I wanted to.
He had it on like five or six hours that day.
Either that or he fixed it and he just didn't tell us he fixed it. Because it's working just fine now and when I tried it for the loaf ported.
We also have devices for hearing impaired folks that we didn't know we had.
They ever find the sign for those? Did they ever find the sign that's supposed to be posted? Working just fine. His answer was that we must be accidentally pressing the bottom on, the button on the bottom. Now we were. Got to get some clouds moving in. When we date things, do you guys have a preference? Do we put twenty two or do we need to put twenty, twenty two? No preference? We control conference, that ought to be a fun. Zero zero eight eight, this is unmuted, go ahead.
Yeah, since you guys don't have a lot going on right now, but you know, you need to have a town hall meeting where people can ask you questions and you can give direct answers. That's what you need to do. And if you put this off any longer, I'm going Facebook, I'm going everywhere I can and I'm going to line up a bunch of questions that people need to know. So, you know, this is not going away, so I suggest you guys hold a town hall meeting and make your statements. You know the questions, they've been out there for a year, the ones that people want to know. And you guys are going to have to come together with the terms that you are not dictatorial entity of this county. The people still run this county. You guys think you are above the, above everything and you're going to have to start answering some questions. That's my comment.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments out there, unmute yourself, star six? Seven two one one, go ahead.
Greg Wagner with C. I'd like to know from you commissioners, why is it you are unwilling to enforce the ordinances that's your job? Zoning ordinance five point one six, title two, two point seven, two point zero two, and title nineteen point zero eight one one zero. All state that million dollar projects will rebuild for county staff time or any special council that's hired. Why aren't you enforcing these ordinances and making these corporations pay when they come into our county? If these solar companies and these under canvas want to come in our county and do business, then they should do business on our terms. All you do is allow these corporations to come in here like Avon Grids Lund Hill and the project gets approved, they do all the studies and the planning director approves it. Nothing's ever questioned. None of the DEIS, none of the FBIS, none of that's ever questioned, it's just allowed to happen. These corporations come into our county and take over. It's your job not to allow that to happen. We have zoning ordinances that you refuse to enforce. If you're not going to enforce billing these corporations that make these projects over a million dollars and then we the citizens file an appeal against those same projects, we should not be billed four thousand dollars. This is total disrespecting to the citizens of our county. It's a slap in our face when you show favoritism for these large corporations and their projects to bring them in our county and you don't bill them the same, a dime, and then you bill us. And the county's not going to benefit from these solar projects because they will pay very little taxes. They're not going to create any jobs, we're not going to get any free electricity from. we're not gonna get any free electricity from them. You've done nothing, you're derelict in your duties. The commissioners in Sherman County, when the wind came in over there, they negotiated with the wind companies. Every citizen gets five hundred and ninety-five dollars a year. Why can't you do something for the citizens of Clickitat County? You sit up there in your office and you do nothing. You have your private meetings with the solar companies, and then you rescind our moratorium. You show no interest in the citizens of the county, you're paid and elected by and paid for your salaries and your big benefits, you passed the sales tax increase to pay for your new salaries and your benefits. But yet funds six, two, six for the, these solar companies, they have a sales tax exemption. All you do is favor these large corporations, and you don't care about the citizens you're supposed to represent. Bend over backwards for them. You don't even enforce the codes that are on the books. When will you write solar ordinances to protect the county and the citizens? Mr. Sauter, I read your email just yesterday where you said, I quote, "I am a stickler for following the law." When are you gonna start doing that? Guys represent the citizens of this county, you're supposed to, but you don't.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner, your time is up. Anybody else have a citizen comment? Want to make comment, unmute yourself, star six, say something so we know you're there. Still in citizen comment, if anybody has a comment, please unmute yourself, raise your hand, star six. Hey, the time being one twenty-five, citizen comment is now over. Now is the time for any board follow-up comments that the board may have for any of the callers. Do you have anything, sir?
I would respond to Mr. Eldred's question about additional legal council expenses. Any, any expenses incurred by any, you know, goes through a budget process, and those expenses have to be approved by the Board of Commissioners, as does any expense. As to individual bills, no. Although we do see them, if people were watching online, they were observing me. Look, this is the bills, and so every week we do get those. But as far as, you know, what the expense, as far as it has to be a budgeted expense, and those budgets are approved by the board. Solar energy or renewable energy business benefits. First off, just for the record, Mr. Eldred, I actually was a small business owner for many, many years. Had employees, paid employees, I do understand business, and I do know business. I ran a profitable construction company for some time, so I've actually, yeah, I've, I've signed the front of paychecks, not just the back of paychecks. So, as far as are the companies getting a different deal than any other business? No, absolutely not. We have an economic development department down this, down the hall from where we are here. They are charged with assisting any businesses that want to come and locate, supporting existing businesses. Any business that comes to this county is treated the same. The, the renewable is not getting any different treatment than any other business would be. Mr. Wagner's comments, I, yeah, I'm, I have tried to respond to those multiple times. I'm, I'm not going to at this point.
Thank you, sir. I guess I would kind of add and maybe clarify for Mr. Eldred. Some of the legal fees that might be the prosecutor defending on a case are part of the budget process that is already in his office and doesn't need to come before the board for further approval. In an issue like the Glenwood Track D where it has to go before the Supreme Court, and there's gonna be an extra cost that's not already budgeted, that has to come before the board for approval. So that's kind of the two different scenarios that are out there. I also would echo Commissioner Sauter's statement on business. I've owned and operated a small business for twenty years, again, signing the front of paychecks and the back. I, I may not be a rocket science, but I think I've pretty much figured it out. And to the best of my knowledge, all the businesses that come in, whether they're from here, born here, want to move here, they're all treated the same, they're all billed the same. And as far as the comments that we don't bill solar companies, the county is currently following the legal guidance that it received in the past. It currently has a request out for new legal guidance, if that changes, we will change. But right now, we are under, following the legal guidance that we last received on billing those projects, and they do get billed. Mr. Wagner's? Yeah, I don't, I don't even know that I want to get into this, because I, I will say that the Sherman County gives money backs to its residents. I'll get into that one, because that one hasn't been brought up five hundred times. They live in a different state, they are under different laws. You may or may not remember, a year ago, I was asking about legal advice on whether we could charge royalties and whatnot, and the answer in Washington State is no. So you might want royalties, if you do, you need to move out of state, it sounds like, because Washington doesn't allow it. The rest of your statements here, I'm not even gonna get into answering, because they're so far off-base, wrong, or just completely inaccurate, that we've answered them correctly multiple, multiple times, and you don't seem to accept those facts, so continue to make up your own, that's fine. That's all the statements I have, we are at one thirty. So moving on, we don't have any public hearings, public meetings or bid openings, so will we move into a department update report, code compliance officer Lem Pratt?
Morning, good afternoon.
Afternoon to this.
Still morning somewhere.
You got me to say morning, so. Graveyard code compliance, you're out sneaking around all night.
You're taking this way too seriously. You're staking out.
I'm gonna be asking for some specialized equipment.
Don't get them started.
So, twenty-eight cases currently that I'm working, code violation cases. I, do I need, I don't need to yell now, right?
No.
Okay.
Hopefully everybody should be able to hear you through the little mic there. If they can't, they'll, hopefully somebody will say something or message and tell us they can't.
So the four solid waste cases, nine septic system cases, wrecking yards, there's three of those. Two conditional use, or excuse me, one conditional use permit, ten building permits, one nighttime lighted sign issue. There's also with that some auxiliary lights alongside the, the building that I'm working with the owner to resolve that. Forty-one code and nuisance cases were closed in January. Twenty-two, again, were the, per the RCW four sixteen point zero eight zero, that's a three-year statute of limitations. And again, I just note that if there wasn't any activity within three years by code compliance, then I, I close those out.
Do you, you just close them out, or do you send, send a letter to the original complainant saying it's been three years?
I haven't been sending any letters out, but I have been doing officer reports, it's the note down below, you know, so for each closed case, notations were made in SmartGov, and officer's report was submitted to the case file, and in many cases uploaded to SmartGov in a PDF for a standard case closure procedures and auditing purposes. So when, you know, twenty years or ten years or what have you, go back and say, okay, and these are the reasons why these cases were, were closed, either through compliance or other reasons. So going down, so the twenty-two cases because of statute of limitations. One was a, the complaints were not property owners. And again, these are regarding nuisance cases. One I found interesting was the appeal hearing, so they submitted an appeal, and the hearing was supposed to take place sixty days after the submission, and that didn't happen. I wanted to note that and close it out by that, just because of the unique circumstances there, versus, yes, it was over three years, but because of that, excuse me, I want to note that separately. All right. Two hundred deceased, one person living in a trailer that has an OSS system.
What's an OSS?
On, onsite septic. One is civil, issues property, property line disputes. And then one court resolution, basically tickets were issued. One deferred to Wazoo. And that was an orchard issue, so an abandoned orchard. Then one new property owner, it was a new property owner, and then the reporter was the violator. So essentially wanting the county to resolve his own, his own issue. Yeah, we're willing to work with people, but I can't go and open an investigation on somebody who wants the county to, to take care of their own problem.
So were they, they were hoping for abatement, or? I mean, it's, I guess it's not relevant, I'm just kind of curious what the circumstances.
I think the circumstances, I recall, was he had a renter, and, and so this.
Okay, that makes sense.
So that's pretty much the end of the report that I have, and it's kind of short this time, so if you have any questions or.
How many of these twenty-eight open cases are? I mean, I would imagine you closed out most of everything that's like old, so these have got to be fairly new and active.
Yeah, so there's a few that are two thousand eighteen still. Mostly twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, I have one case that, that I'm working that's, was open this year. The nuisance cases, a lot of those are still in suspension, if you will, because if there's a letter that's been issued, non-compliance letter, that kind of thing, it went to abatement, that, then I'm leaving them on the books, if you will. Just because I don't feel that I, I can close it out once there's, there has been action that had been taken, like one where it was again, letters were, were issued against the property of non-compliance. And so my, the, the problem is, when you close those out, then you have a six-year retention on those cases before you, then you can destroy those cases. You know, the, the files on those. And I don't want to have those cases destroyed without strict guide, legal guidance on, on those. Primarily, those are the nuisance abatement cases, yeah. If, if they did not have, it didn't go that far, and there hasn't been three years, you know, there's been a span of three years, you know, on the investigation, then I go ahead and close them out.
You must be doing something right, because there's a couple of properties that, I don't know if they're on your list, but I can't imagine somebody hasn't called them in, and I've heard complaints, that now when I drive by, there's a, a waste connections, or a waste management container in front, or republic, whatever. I guess I should get it right, right? That they're cleaning out the trash.
That's a violation.
That might be a violation, you're on the wrong side of the river. So yeah, some people are, are, are moving forward that haven't moved forward in a couple of years, so I don't know if that's you moving them forward, or just being persuasive with the letter. But either way, it seems to be.
Well, I've been, been attempting to make in-person contact with folks as well, so, and I think it helps. So after a letter had gone out, and whether it'd been, had gone out previous to me fulfilling this position, a letter had gone out, and so in one case, several letters went out and came back, you know, that they were, they didn't claim them. And so I went out to the, to the address and contacted, you know, the, either the owner or the occupant. And so I went out to the to the address and contacted, you know, the either the owner or the occupant of the address. Yeah, like one case in a wrecking yard case, there's some civil. Litigation going on, so they're not able to, per the court, they're not able to do anything yet. But within the next 30 days, there should be some movement on on that.
Just just a comment to which I I highlighted on my, you know, of your 42. Which you skipped over, that you had nine were closed because of compliance. I mean, I think that's that's something to be celebrated. You buried the lead here. As far, so I think I think that's worth.
And remember, there were nine compliant.
There were nine compliant that, you know, people that that we are, you know, you're being successful in getting people either through. You know, or they're helping them along.
Yeah, and I had a conversation with, this morning with one gentleman that says, you know, I've been meaning to do this and and. And take care of this issue, and. So I'll get with my buddy that lives out here, we'll get that taken care of, and you know, it's okay, we'll follow up with you on on that. I think a lot of it is is. Maybe coaxing.
Well, we always, you know, have said that, is that we don't want to be a heavy hand. We hate, you know, when we get to the abatement. Phase, that's that's really unfortunate, and it's. You know, in some ways, it's a failure that we couldn't, but sometimes that's the only option left, because we. Typically, ones that we have moved to abatement are people that are just entrenched and won't. They won't deal with it, and so we have to. Distasteful, I'll say.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm waiting for for on some of these new complaints to come in in order to have a new investigation.
That's all I had. I just wanted to call out, hey, you know, lead with the success part.
How many new complaints would you say you're averaging, averaging per month since you started?
Per month? I'm trying to think how many were opened up last year.
Trying to think if it's running rampant, if the phone's ringing off the hook, or if you get a couple.
Well, it's, I I'm getting four, maybe five phone calls a week. On inquiries and then directing them to fill out the. Yeah, but I like to let them vent, if you will, first, before I I start doing that. Well, I need to have this filled out. I can email this to you. You can retrieve it on the, on, you know, the website, or. On, in some cases, I've, you know. Mailed them, the complaint letters out as well, so.
Do you do, do you do some? You know, I mean, anybody can file a complaint that wants to file a complaint, but I think sometimes, because I've had. I've had difficult conversations with people sometimes when they describe the circumstance, it's like, that's, you know, it's not optimal. But it's, I don't think this is in violation, and I I don't want you to waste your time, as far as that we are likely. It's not going to rise to the level that. It's going to qualify and that the county's.
Well, there's. Yeah, and there was one, one case where the. That I went and reviewed it and talked extensively with prosecutor about it, and there's. There's nothing that the county, the way that the code and ordinance, you know, ordinance is written, there's nothing that can be enforced. In this, and I know that it's a case that has brought hate and discontent, if you will, in the past. But but there's nothing there. To enforce, and and I don't know how many times I've talked to David about this particular one. But, you know, I have to look at it from the standpoint of somebody is filing a complaint and say, okay, do I have? You know, first of all, do they have, if it's a code violation, you're right, if they're affected by it, you know. If it's a nuisance, they have to be a property owner, you know, within that five-mile radius. I I kind of scratched my head about the five-mile radius though, too, but that's what I work with.
Right, that's what the code says.
That's the code, yeah. So, and then look and see, you know, research and look and see, okay, what violation, if any, is here. And then go from there as far as what the options are. You know, my job isn't to say, well, I don't want to. Deal with that, you know. My job is to deal with it one way or another, and then I have been writing letters back to some of these people that. You know, send in a complaint, but there's no enforceable. Code to, you know, enforce in this situation. One perfect example is, somebody had put, many decades ago, apparently back in the 70s. Somebody had put a fence line through somebody else's property. Code compliance had gone out there, and I think at the time, we're under the impression that there was something that could be enforced. In fact, there was quite a. A case file on it, and I went back through several times to make sure that I'm not missing something, and. It's solely a civil.
Civil matter.
Yeah, civil matter there. Pardon?
Is this that side of town? Our neck in the woods?
Oh, well, could be.
Trying to see if I'm on the same page.
Good answer. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, I don't know how, I I, even if it happened today or yesterday, I don't know how a property line dispute. Is a code compliance issue. I mean, that's always going to be illegal.
Well, in several cases where it's like, well, they're operating without a business license. Now, the, there may be a conditional use permit required for the activity, but we don't enforce business licenses. Yeah, so when they, when they, they send something in like that. So well, I, you know, are you complaining about the activity? Because the license I can't do anything about.
No further questions, I guess? Nothing else for us?
Keep it up, yeah, okay, all right, keep on, keep it on.
Yeah, maybe, maybe when you have nine cases closed, put that one in bold or something.
Okay, well, at the end of the year, I'll give you.
Just don't work so hard you put yourself out of work. Alrighty, so. We can do unfinished business if there is any. There is? All right, ready for the consent?
Number three.
It has noted number three being pulled for for the review.
So that will leave four items?
Four items, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda, noting we are pulling item three. For consideration, so that will be a total of four items. My motion is to approve.
I will step down and second the motion to approve four items, noting we're pulling item number three. All those in favor say yea.
Yea.
Yea. Pay the bills?
Is there any other besides, my blue, I took my blue card with my notes. So I don't, no, no, I don't, is there beyond just the, okay. Okay, no pay estimates. I didn't think there was, but I I could go get my blue card. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve accounts payable warrants in the amount of $461,522. And for the date ending February 7th, 2022.
I will step down and second the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Push your passes, it sounds like you like aye better, so I'll stick with aye.
Sorry, force of habit.
Board pending. Don't know that we have much since we're missing one today. Anything I have, I'll just hold over until we have a full board. Nothing pressing.
I have nothing pressing, sir.
Scratch is board pending, no new business. We'll pause for a second before I move on. Mr. Treasurer, do you have something for us? Elected official report, Mr. Prosecutor, do you have anything for open session? He's on Zoom, he's not unmuted. Mr. Prosecutor, one more time. Might be on the phone, you sure you don't have anything, sir? Showed up for the phone with. If we don't have a Mr. Prosecutor, we would be officially done, or we can wait for a minute and see if he shows up. Rebecca's on there, too, so. We are a good 15 minutes early for his scheduled time.
With your excellent management of our schedule. Hey, take what you, take, take the, take the winds.
How do you know, do they wait around till 2:00, 2:05 or so?
Yeah, I guess, make sure. Actually, if you don't mind, sir, I will step out for a second.
All right, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, I think. Hey, we are back. If Mr. Cornell or Ms. Cranston wants to speak, we know we're five minutes early still, 10 minutes early.
I did look up the population of Sherman County. 1,642.
Yeah. And they give $500 a piece.
Yeah, it's about $800,000 a year that they.
Yeah, the Sherman County thing was the reason way back in the day I was looking at the royalty type option.
Different state, different system, different, different laws, different tools available to local government.
A different state restrictions that we have to follow. Whether we like them or not. I did notice on the legislation, the moratorium on FSEC didn't make it out of committee, but the. Streamlining it and removing the public hearing so it can just go straight before the governor did go.
Yes.
I think they're fully aware of the. Inequities of where they're placing, I just don't think they care. Head Senior Advisory Board. Not a lot changed. They asked again about the Assistant Living Center, gave them the same information. They were waiting on more funding. We were surprised to hear that, and it's like, I thought we relayed that multiple times.
Yeah, it's just a mere $3.2 million.
Was it over 3.2? Because I told them it was a two, two and change, two, two, two.
Yeah, two and change is the, now with with the construction escalation and cost, and it's the. A realistic figure is real, I mean, if you're being.
Well, that's kind of what I told them when I was thinking it was two and change, 2.3-ish or something like that, same deal if you don't get money soon.
Right, it goes.
That didn't really hold either. Throw another shout out for the prosecutor, Mr. Cornell or. Ms. Cranston, do you have anything for the board, or are you there?
Sorry about that. I had a, I had a meeting with the law enforcement, I've just back in, and I I don't really have anything to report right now. I'd be happy to, you know, continuing to look into a few of the different issues being discussed and. Hopefully, have some more information on the fee stuff in a, in a week or two, but. I am, that's what I know right now. I'll be happy to take any questions, not that I. Can know for sure whether I can give the answer, but I can certainly try, or at least know what to look into, so.
We figured you were stuck in court, and anything pressing, you could just wait until next week. We just wanted to make sure you had the opportunity, so.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
I don't have any. Questions for the record.
No, do you, just a quick, and I don't necessarily expect an answer now. Do we know, I had noted. You know, we signed in the consent agenda today, authorizing the surplus sale that the treasurer or the the dates and the. Equipment that the treasurer is doing, the online one, basically kind of an online garage sale, it's all the. Left, you know, desks and bookcases and different things, and I had actually. I had a couple of different people asked me about, that are in the teaching profession, that they wanted to be able to bid. On those for some, some items in their, for their classroom. And are they, if they're related to me, are they precluded from participating in the? I mean, I know they certainly are when we're surplusing, you know, real estate property, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, with the real estate.
Bookcases and desks?
Yeah, with the real estate, there's a particular statute that prevents any of the county employees and their families from bidding on the, on those. You know, seized, usually tax titles, things like that, or foreclosed on for failure to pay taxes. With the surplus in general, it's, it's more ambiguous, what, the guidance that comes from MRC and that's adopted by a lot of jurisdictions that. Well, actually, their guidance is just to prohibit it outright. I think the the more sensitive, and I I, and I believe correct interpretation of the. Conflict statute is to have individuals that, that, so. You need to track what are the goods that are being surplus, and to ensure that individuals that participate in the decision to surplus. Or worked in the office or department in which those goods were surplus from, do not bid on those assets. That, you know, that, that's probably the the best course of action, logistically. That, you know, that, that's probably the, the best course of action, logistically, I'm not sure if there's a way of doing that currently, but I know in the best case, you know, it would be preferable that if you participated in the decision to surplus, or if the goods were surplus from your office department, that you and your family should not be bidding on the auction.
Okay. Okay, yeah, because I have, I have family members that are in the teaching profession that would like to, but I will tell them no.
Well, generally, it's the, I think it's true to immediate family, so if you're talking about, you know, the second cousins and so forth, I, I don't think.
So, that, I wasn't.
For you, yeah, second cousins might qualify, but yeah, I thought it was immediate family.
I was, it was immediate family, so.
Right.
Okay. But I'd rather be safe than sorry.
And I don't know that, that, the, the, the public's going to be too concerned over a five-dollar desk, but better be safe than sorry.
Better safe than sorry, yeah.
Makes sense, any other questions for the prosecutor? No? All right, nothing else for the prosecutor, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next week. With that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to adjourn our regular meeting, we have no workshop scheduled this week.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn, I'll step down and second the motion, all those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Not opposed, motion passes, we will see you next Tuesday, everybody.
Bye now.
Thank you.